It is 1:00 and we'll call this meeting to order. The reason for this special meeting, it advertises a joint session between the county commissioners and county council. The purpose of this meeting is to receive information pertaining to WTS GIS licenses and Beacon, I think. So, we have here with us Paul Owens with WTH. We have Paul Owens with us. And Paul, whenever you're ready, we will be more than happy to hear the information you're here to share.
Sure. First, just want to start off to thank you for allowing us to come and discuss your GIS system with you. I passed out a handout here that's kind of a quick overview as to where we are in the county and what we've done in the past. Currently, there's about 50 licenses that the county has for the desktop GIS. Eight of those editors, 42 of them are viewers. They're throughout the county, Sheriff's Department, 911, Emergency Management, Fire Departments, Probation, Health Departments, and then in the land, that's Public Safety side, and the Land Information Assessor, the Auditor, Area Plan, Economic Development We started the relationship with the county in 2008 when they first purchased eight licenses. WTH has been around for 50 years. We used to be a civil engineering company, mainly doing bridges and road construction. And about 18 years ago, we came across the GIS product that you see up on the screen. And now, that's basically all we do, is some type of mapping and things related to mapping we get out of the engineering altogether. We have a lot of different products that relate to GIS, where we track vehicles, we interface into dispatch centers, plot crimes, things like that. The main, our mission statement or our purpose is to empower local government. We're here to help you guys do what you want to do. We can give you ideas from other counties and even other states, things that have been done and the way they've done things. But, the boss always told me, when I'm in the county, "I'm your employee, I'm there to do what you guys need done." Our service agreement is the ongoing cost that you guys have with us. And our service agreement covers consulting and support, so if you were dealing anything with GIS, we're willing to come in, be there, be part of the discussion, and help you guys through the complexities of GIS. As part of the service, you get free software upgrades every time they synchronize. If there's bug fix or actually a new upgrade out there, it will come down and upgrade your system on the desktop. We also have unlimited toll-free support. You can phone in. We'd like to keep it during normal business hours, but we're there. There's people even working the weekends that can take calls in case of emergencies. 911 typically is the one that would call on weekends. We have off-site backups of the data. Say a layer gets corrupted tomorrow, we have at least 20 of those backups from every time that's been synchronized that we can restore within minutes. Anything longer than that, we have to go to tapes and it may take a lot longer to get those off of there. As part of the service, we also do continuing training. Counties have new people coming in all the time, so we have to come back and do training over and over because of new people. And we also, as part of that, do the reinstallations. As the computers get replaced, we'll be there to install them. A lot of times, the IT people will help us out with that, and we can do a lot of it remotely. Remote support's gotten a lot better over the last five years to where now, we can do a lot of stuff sitting in our office and just remote in and take over control of the computer and help people out that way. That's kind of the summary of this report here. Are there any questions that you guys have as far as the report or where we are with the county?
Could you say we currently have 50 licenses?
Correct.
Okay, I think one of the questions in the room is, "Why do we have so many? And can any of these licenses be shared?"
They can be moved around. Basically, they're set up to be on a PC. There's two different types of GIS that the county has with us. One is a web version, which is open to the public, which everybody can see, as long as you have a computer and internet access. And then, there's the desktop version. Those are made to be able to be seen when you don't have internet. There's other data that's on the desktop that's not shared with the public also. But those 50 licenses can be moved around anywhere you guys want them moved to. That's part of what we do, is our service and consulting, is we come in and move those licenses to where you guys want them moved to. But they can't really be shared to where you put a program on a server and people go look at that. The program has to sit locally, the data can sit on the server to where multiple people look at that one spot. But then, if they're on a laptop or in a different office, it's usually stored locally on that computer.
And if I can throw in maybe a question or further. I'll use Dave Lor's layers that he was doing for the Congressional Utility Office. We could see some of the information, maybe, I don't know with any, but all of his uses the main master mapping system, but his layers. And you wouldn't want anybody else being able to access or mess up his layer, nor would you want us to be able to mess up what Warren is doing. And I see Angie and Richard, for instance, down at the Highway Department, and I'm going to ask a question about this Pacer report that Warren's office was kind enough to print out. But each department might have its own uses, like for, I know Mike was very excited about the three different volunteer fire departments having their own one to use, so that they can identify those layers of data and information that are important to them. And I know Bill McDaniel, when he was first describing to me what all of this will do, Adrian's involvement in getting part of the initial grant.
Right.
What it can do from a, like you say, public safety, the emergency management access, like for instance, if we were to have a derailed truck downtown Connersville or Fayette County, and it was spewing poisonous gas in the prevailing winds or what have you, that's kind of, I don't know.
Yes, it can. It can do a plume and show what houses are affected by that particular gas and how much has been released. It can show basically the area that's affected by that crash, things like that.
And then, that would also tie in with the 911 notification system, so that Jackie Pennington or whatever can broadcast the alert about the roads being closed or no access because of the thing down, using all of that information there together. But each of them, each of the different departments have their own set of data that's important to them, but it interacts with everyone else's information as well.
Every map can look very different. I mean, it's based off of what that particular person wants to see, and even if they're colorblind, things like that, they'll have layers colored different. We set them up so they can change the map to what they want to see, and you aren't, like you said, you aren't looking at all the water information for the city of Connersville if that's not what the part that you want to see. Typically, those kind of layers are only shared with certain people that the town or city would say, "Yeah, it's okay to share with those," because that data is their data. Just like all the data that the county has is your data, for us to share that with anybody else, we have to get your permission, and we'll do that in writing before we share it.
And I think that Dave Lor was instrumental in helping with you, WTH, and Dave helped create a special layer for Diana Wright, for the work that she's doing with the grant request, not just for what she does for the city, but also for the county. She has used that database to help Warren, not just Warren, but Richard and the Highway Department fill in the information for the grant request for the last year and the one we are asking for this year. So, they have utilized that information available out there. And again, I'm not familiar and have never had hands-on, other than what Davis showed me and what I'm hoping that you can show us. But I would like for you to do, if you could do a cursory, walk through all of the different layers that are available, so that some of the others could know. I'm sure Bill and Warren use it all the time, and Michael, I'm sure, has a good idea what it's used for, but maybe if you could show them some of the different layers.
Sure.
And then, those layers don't get there by themselves. Someone like a Dave Lor then works pretty much all the time updating that information as people's names and addresses change, as people shut off the water here or add the water there, or they put in a new drain line or whatever. You can answer those questions better than I.
Parcels is a good example of that, to where the names and ownership of parcels are changing all the time. What we do is we worry about that parcel number in the map, and all that data is pulled out from the auditor and assessor's data, so that they're actually looking at pieces of the auditor and assessor's data online and on the desktop. That's done by Bill running another program that pulls in the current owner, changes in the parcel information from the auditor and assessor.
How often do you get updates from the county assessor and the auditor's office on that information?
It could be daily. However, I mean, anytime we make some changes, I would recommend that you run it. But at a minimum, I would run it once a week, just so that the changes that happen that week would be displayed. Usually, they're displayed 24 to 48 hours after somebody runs that import, it's Parcel Import Utility that pulls in that information. And then, after he synchronizes, that information's available. Anybody else synchronizes after that, and it also goes up on the web.
One of the things that I have thought, I've tried to think of different ways the county could benefit from utilizing this if we knew it. You probably are not aware, but back, what, five or six years ago, the county had a major layoff, and we laid off nine, 10 people in all of the different departments. And it's all they can do sometimes, just to keep the necessary work done for the county. There's not a lot of extra time in any of the offices to go do the add the bells and whistles and what have you. But we have added an employee, a part-time employee in the auditor's office, for instance, whose main purpose is to verify that the, what's the word I'm looking for? When you have, the exemptions. The exemptions are accurate, because Dale, I think you quoted, you added up some of the data that Kathy had given us from the assessor's office, that what percentage or what number of people in Fayette County pay zero taxes, zero taxes, because of all the exemptions. And we are not wanting to take anyone's exemptions away from them, but we want to verify that all of the exemptions are accurate. And sometimes, a change in ownership or a change in something, maybe that information doesn't get updated. And I envision the auditor's office being able to use a program with the parcel numbers to verify that information all of the time, so that they can look at it without it being, having to pick every single property record and then record what they're doing or what have you. You can use that information. And again, I don't.
Correct. You can. Just adding a field in there or fields into the data that then you can search on and say, "Yeah, I want all the ones without exemptions colored red." And it would show all the parcels out there that have no property tax collected from.
And then, maybe.
Or paying full.
And any of them that change ownership within the calendar year. You would go back and you verify those. Those that you've already verified, you know, you don't have to verify that particular thing. If the owner is already verified to have these certain exemptions, you don't have to go back and check unless, you know, that person has moved on and done something different. The other thing that I saw, well, this particular, what drove me to go see Dave Lor and to talk to the mayor and to the commissioner, was we wanted to set up a Main Street layer. Because the city of Connersville, the mayor, has been very anxious to try to get the Main Street program going again, and that has coming along, and the application was sent last week, September the 1st, to the state of Indiana. But when the historic district was set up, a lot of work was done by Bill McDaniel and maybe Bill Mackey, and I'm not sure who all, but the parcel numbers were identified. And then, again, I think there was a lot of manual, put in a spreadsheet, the address of the property and the, to add the owner information and information as far as the state of Indiana, in return for setting up the Main Street program, wants data back, like, "How many properties do you have in the Main Street data? And are they single-story? Are they basement? Are they double-story? Are they occupied or not occupied? Are they banking? Are they agriculture? Are they commercial government? You know, what kind of buildings they are?" And to record that data. And so, there might be one or more layers that Main Street might want to use, and Main Street doesn't have an editor's license, but the commissioner's office does have an editor's license. And so, that's how we ask permission from the commissioners to use the license. That's kind of how we got to asking the commissioners. And then, Michael installed one of the commissioners on the computer right there that you're at. But again, we have to report back to the state of Indiana about the Main Street and what kind of progress we're adding as far as tracking businesses downtown, did we get a grant or what have you. But there's $170,000 revolving loan fund that was set up back, I don't know, eight or 10 years ago, back when the, before the crash and before the Main Street program dissolved, and there's a couple of businesses that were still paying money. They can't loan out anymore because the framework that administers the program dissolved. And so, that's why they're anxious to get it back in, and so, there could be loans given to the property owners if they qualify, so if they're in that Main Street organization. And I know one of the things that Bill said that he would like to have from an Area Plan Commission, that people will come in with an address and an application and that they want to have an owner-owned business, or they want to, not spot zoning, because that's a negative thing, but, you know, they want to know if they could do this at that location or that. Or they want to maybe put up a TV tower or something. Well, are they in the airport protection zone? Are they in the historic preservation zone? If they happen to have an address that's in the historic preservation zone, then they have to get special written permission from that committee. If they are in the urban enterprise area, Urban Enterprise Association area, then they could apply for particular grants from that association. And so, Dave Lor helped Chris Karsee prepare a couple of the maps that we needed for the application to the state of Indiana. And I think you told me about many counties use the road information to verify that we're getting the right amount of income from the state, both for the city and the county, based on the total miles of highway that we maintain. And that's why I went down to Warren's office, and Dale Mingle was kind enough to print off this report. The county paid, what, $30,000? We were kind of had our arms twisted to have the survey done, of all, the Pacer survey. And so, here we have this information done by this engineering firm, and how are we using that as a county highway department, as commissioners, to, you know, come up with an overall game plan of what we're going to do with the highway maintenance? Which roads are they going to chip and seal? Which roads are they going to put pavement on? Are we going to verify the roads paved and otherwise every year that we could print a report? This is a nice report, and it's got tons of information as far as the length. But I have to manually put in a calculator and maintain it if I wanted to compare the total miles, has the total miles changed. But whereas if you were to give us a report that would simply total the bottom of all of those lengths and spit the report out, so that as part of the annual audit system, we could use that.
That's actually my background. I worked for the city of Indianapolis. I actually went out more than 25 years ago doing Pacer ratings. A lot of people think Pacer's a new thing, it's been around for a really long time. We would actually do the whole city of Indianapolis in a nine-year cycle and determine what roads are paved based off of those ratings. But that's what the map is great at, is taking data like that and making it visible, so you can check the data. And things like Pacer ratings, you can color code by the rating, so you can see the roads that are in the worst shape based off colors versus other roads. I'll do a little bit of that stuff for you here when you guys are ready for a little bit of demo. I'm going to try to keep it kind of short, and hopefully you guys will ask some questions for things you want to see.
I'd like to ask one more question to just beat your thought as you're going through your demo. The one thing, Warren had this map, and he didn't have this one, because this one's my own personal one, but Warren has this map pinned on his office wall, and it's the last time, it was 1991, is the last time it was updated. Bill, did you ever manually write on any of these maps? No? Well, I'll bet a prior surveyor might have, because I don't know whose old writing that is. But that's one of the questions I think that I asked you, so the challenge.
That's kind of the problem with paper maps. The day you print them, they're outdated.
They're outdated.
So, the digital maps, you can print one today and print another one tomorrow with the corrections that happened that next day. But trying to keep paper maps is kind of thing of the past. I mean, you need them for display and for people to see outside of a computer, but it's really something that's not showing current data typically.
If you are working on projects in the county, and again, maybe Frank and Mark Moby, being commissioners or wearing commissioner hats, they'd probably get questioned, "Why did we pave? Why did you pave waterway road? That's one of the newest, best roads we had in the county. Why in the hell didn't you spend your money over here on such and such and so-and-so road?" I mean, those are, we get questions as council of those things. But again, so you can have the data to support that. But I wanted to go get a plat map from the 4H office, the extension office, although I hate them, because you can't hardly look at them. You can't look at them, that is a big thing, because you have to look at it a square at a time. And they ran out, so they're in the process of having more printed, but again, it's only good for that. But if we could add those layers that we could look at so they could see, I just think that is a big boon to the county and to, you know, contacting property owners. And again, Bill McDaniel for the Area Plan Commission, when he has to contact property owners because somebody up here in Harrison Township wants to put a CAFO. Well, you have to contact the property owners. A report could be generated, so that Bill could plug in the criteria and spit out the report, instead of him having to manually look that information up. It just streamlines and makes things a lot easier. Those are some of the things that I see that we could do if we had more people, more time, and just ask the programs. You probably have some very elaborate, sophisticated programs.
It ranges, it's a wide range of applications it can be used for. I mean, it's, GIS mapping is, you know, very simple to 911. When your calls come in to 911, they pick up the phone, it shows the address you're calling from. If you're on a cell phone, it may show the cell tower first, but if they hit a rebit on the console, they can actually see where you are with your cell phone. Hundreds of times now, our clients have walked people out of woods and stuff that have been lost. They'll just tell them to start walking down the path, see which way they're walking, and say, "Oh, you're going the wrong way, turn around, the other way, you'll be about a mile away from the road." It's just, it's hard for me to explain all the different uses that 911 and mapping have together. Talked earlier about Beacon and WTH. We are competitors, but for the most part, they deal with land information. They don't deal with the public safety side or the infrastructure side very much, like Connersville Utilities, things like that, what we call infrastructure. We try to break our service into three categories. Land information, that's basically the parcels, section corners, a lot of different things that have to do with land. Public safety, that's all your fire EMS, 911, police officers for town and county. And then, infrastructure, that's typically the utilities and the Highway Department, things that have assets that they're trying to manage and maintain. So, we usually break our service up into those three categories, and that's how we do a lot of our training and stuff, even will do it based off of those categories, because they have similar things that they do. Roads, kind of like a piece of pipe. You want to track it, you want to find out when you did maintenance on it last, how much it costs, things like that. I'll start going through some really basic training here of how the map works. There's a search box up here. If you click on that search box, if I just start typing in, well, I got to leave my cursor up there. Let's do an 808. It gives me all the possibilities in the county that 808 starts with for an address. So, I'm going to go down a little bit, we'll do 808 Fifth Street. If you click on it, it goes in circles, shows exactly where that location is on the map. I can hit max and then it'll stay highlighted where that position is. I can zoom back in and see it. I'm going to zoom into that location. If I click on the parcel, over here, it pulls up the parcel information. If I click on it here, it pulls up a form that has all the different pieces of information that the county has asked for us to put in their parcel data. We can add additional information at any time to those fields. We can add additional fields. We can have some manually entered fields. If the surveyor's office has some specific information that they want to keep manually, we can add manual fields to that that we put up on the web. But typically, it's all been pulled from the auditor and assessor's data. In the search box, I can search roads. Elm Valley, Elmwood Drive, it's going to show where that road is throughout the county. I can also search owner names. So, there's Owens, finds that piece of. So there's Owens, finds that particular piece of property. Typically searching for parcels, you wanna use last names because parcel deeds can be entered, for the same person can be entered five or 10 different ways. Whether you use middle name, last name, wife's name, all kinds of information like that.
I would wanna comment right there. We had, we've been talking to the assessor's office and also the treasurer's office, and the treasurer has since had a third-party provider mail out the tax statements. Because again, I think I mentioned, we had a layoff in the county and so just didn't have as many people as we had to do all of the work. And we had to figure out how to get the same job done with fewer people. One of the things that they offered as a benefit from using that service is that they communicate to the US Postal Service, official mailing addresses, to make sure that the mailing address was valid. And that, I know that we have rules that you have to follow as far as how you can correct how errors get in the databases. But some of the things, if that's not how they apply for the, you know, when you buy a property, how it's deeded, et cetera. So there's some things that you can do and some things, I guess, that you can't do. But clearly, if you could correct the addresses so that you're mailing all the addresses to the right place to begin with, so you don't get all the things back. But again, comparing addresses there to the addresses that we send out, I don't know what we might, I'll use the same area plan commission, sending out addresses for neighbors because you're asking for them to come to the meeting.
I'll show an example of that here in just a minute, but yeah, typically the addresses are put in here under, using two different methods or combining the two methods. One is a IMSAG, a Master Street and Address Guide that 911 uses to assign addresses and to list the ranges of addresses for particular roads in your county. That IMSAG decides who responds to that call, whether it's Hamilton Township or Posey Township, which fire department responds to a particular call. The second is the postal addresses. We typically take the postal address and use that also, but the 911 address is the official address that the post office should be recognizing and accepting. We wanna match that 911 call. If not, it's not gonna pinpoint where that address is on the map. An example that you were just asking about, finding properties within a certain area, there's multiple ways of doing it. Let me write down this parcel number here. So that particular parcel, if I wanna find all the addresses, say, within 1,000 feet of that, there are tools in here that I can do, list features within an area. I'm gonna select a bounding feature. I'm actually gonna go to my parcels layer and start typing in that number. And it's already found it. So I'll say okay there. Says what do I wanna search for? So I could search for other parcels, I could search for addresses, anything in the map. I'm gonna do parcels this time. Say okay. Sorry, did the wrong thing there. Specify distance from a feature is actually what I wanted. So let me type that in again. Says what distance do I wanna look for? A thousand feet? Went up for parcels. So it just generated a list of 218 parcels that are within 1,000 feet from any point of that parcel that I used to look up from. I can print that list, I can send it to Excel. And now I have an Excel spreadsheet that I can do a mailing list from. Used a lot of times in variances, things like that, for planning zoning, certain permits that you have, you have to notify people within a certain distance of your address. But I can also say locate all, and it's gonna show me all the parcels that are affected by that 1,000 foot from that parcel. The downtown district here. So if I wanted to find all the parcels in a certain area here, I could also do lookup, list features within, I can draw my own boundary. And I'm gonna do it kinda quick, but I could zoom in and get really close on some of these. But I'm just gonna go up this street and make sure I'm touching the parcels on the front side of that property. I'm gonna go across, like I said, I'm gonna get a few extras or a few less than I would if I was really doing this. So that generated a list of 29 parcels in that area that I drew there. I can locate all, and it highlights those parcels that were within that area. In the index, this is a list of all the different layers that are in the map. There are photography layers that you can see in the background. We have regional roads layers, those are your surrounding counties. Things like township. If I wanna see where Jackson Township is, boom, I click, it tells me that. Corporate boundaries, all the sections in the county. And even this list here that I'm going through, there could be a lot more layers that are just not in this map, and there probably are. Ones that people have used for temporary uses to build a different project. Things like Connersville's Utilities. Parcels, you can do searches. You can do searches on any one of the pieces of data. Calculated acreage. So I could look for all the parcels that are greater than 200 acres. Only found one. Let's try a smaller search here.
Go to Posey Township.
Is it smaller than 100 acres or larger than 100 acres? Found 380, 338 parcels that are 100 acres or more. Say locate all, shows them all on the map.
How many acres in Fairview and Posey Township?
Tells me there are, whatever that number is.
I can't see where that.
11,000.
Yeah. It's the center one there. What was the other one? That's the kinda stuff the map's really good at. Any kinda calculation of area, things like that, maps are really good at where it's really hard for a person to do that off of paper maps. Corporate boundaries, same thing, you could calculate the area of those. Parcels, all of these underneath this parcel, anytime you see a plus or a minus there, it's categorized layer. So there's a lot more information underneath there, what subdivisions they're in, lot lines within subdivisions, land hooks represent parcels owned, the same parcel on maybe both sides of the road, or both sides of a river or railroad track, they'll have land hooks to indicate they're owned by the same person. Even has dimensions of the parcels. So as they're drawing those in, they can capture those calls on the deed that's saying something's 155 feet northwest, it puts those dimensions in the map as they're drawing them out.
Excuse me?
Yes?
As our licenses stand, does this information be used by mobile data terminals as a law for?
Depends what kinda mobile data terminal. I haven't seen what they have over there right now.
But it can be done?
Yeah. If it's a computer and it's Windows-based, we can usually put our map on there.
Does it require separate licenses?
Yes, it does.
Each one?
Yes.
So you could move from an existing license to cover that?
Yes. Yes. That's, I would say that's 60% of our business is public safety, and a lot of places the officers have it in all the cars. Dispatch and a lot of places can see where all the officers are at any time, so then they can dispatch more efficiently. Highways, it'll show the highways in your county. Here it shows all the septics. I see those aren't placed on the map, but has the zoning, has one of your town's fire hydrants. Those can be put on either through the utility, or if the utility's not cooperative, we can have the firefighters go out and collect with the GPS unit all the locations of the ESNs, that's basically who responds to each area in the county, what fire, what police, what ambulance.
Can you show each fire department's area that they cover?
I show four different ones, is that correct?
No.
Okay. Just by clicking this ESN, there's Connersville, I guess, and this is BVFD.
Bentonville.
Shows the areas they have. GVFD. A lot of counties, we get into more detail than that, will have second responder that they call out, what fire department is their second responder for certain areas. So like this particular township, their second call out could possibly be somebody from a different county because it's closer in certain parts of their service area. Any of those things that are wrong at any time can be changed, they can be synchronized, and then it's available, as soon as that person that changed them synchronized, it's available to all the other people to synchronize and download that information.
You don't actually change anything though until data from here in the county is submitted to you?
For the most part, we don't change anything, period. We try to get the county to change the data because they're the ones with the local knowledge. We will help you, we will change it if you ask us to for a lot of stuff, but we want you guys to change it. We want you guys to learn how to use it and utilize the map. If we can get people to utilize the map and put new stuff in, they think of new ways of using the map all the time, where if we're the ones doing it, you aren't growing your use of the product.
Basically, we're telling you what we need rather than you telling us what we need.
Correct. We'll help you, and we have an annual users conference where we have, you know, a lot of different people from around the state come in, to where you can talk to them and find out other layers they have. We also provide templates, things like that. So if you guys said you wanna do a culvert layer for your highway department, I'd probably give you five or 10 templates and have you guys pick which one you wanna start with. And then you can still remove or add pieces of that template. So you can add additional fields or remove fields, so that they have a starting point instead of you guys trying to figure out what's the best pieces of data to capture for a culvert inventory.
How about cemeteries?
Anything like that. Cemeteries, anything that has a point on the earth that you can represent that data by, that's what GIS is about.
Can you maybe show us what Warren was talking about, something that the clerk's office found? We had people inside one address that were listed as one voting region, but in fact, they were in another, and that how the GIS could help show that. And also, every time there's another election, the clerk's office gives out to the person running for office what their area is included, their included area, so for they could do a walk list, for instance.
Correct.
What kind of, what kind of possibilities are that?
So like here is an election precincts area, so we'll just pick Harrison One. That actually shows the area there. I can do the same type of thing that I did earlier, where I select a bounding feature, Harrison One. This time I'm gonna search for addresses. And I want combined addresses because you have two different sets of addresses, one the county maintains, one the city. So this shows 352 addresses within that area that are shown on the map right now. So that can be generated out as a list. So that the voter precincts can have a list of all the ones that are supposed, addresses that are supposed to be in that area.
And I, if you can go back to, to one where you just were, where you selected, you can spit it out to an Access database as well as?
Correct.
An Excel spreadsheet. So if someone were well-versed in a Microsoft Access, then again, they use that database, add their own database, I don't know.
And that's part of what we help you consult with. Say you're using a different type of database, we'll help you get this data into that type of database. That's part of our service, that if you guys are sending data to somebody else or need help bringing in data from somebody else, we're there to help do that.
Well, again, I think that's one of the things, like the Main Street group is going to be having to submit information to the state periodically to maintain their designation.
So that shows all those addresses. Yeah, it says, it's really not very difficult, but you can import-export, and we can export out to a shape file. That's a common GIS file format. Excuse me, we'd export that out, and the state would probably accept that as, you know, something they can look at and see. If not, if they wanted a different format, that's what we're there for, to help you guys get that.
Okay, what if, and again, I don't know whether this is allowed or not, but again, I'm gonna run for, I am a member of the county council, but I wanna run for county commissioner. And I am thinking about sending a mailing to people asking to vote. Is that something that a clerk's office could provide for us, fee to spit something like that out, or is that done, or is that illegal to do? I don't know, you know.
It can be done, it's up to your county, basically. We didn't use 911 data as the address data. If you get the data from the phone companies for your 911 address points, you cannot share it. They will not, it's part of your agreement that you won't share that data. But these were put on there out But these were put on there outside of using that data. I mean, we probably used it as a source, but it wasn't what we put on the map. So it's your data for the county to decide how they want to share it. Most of our counties have a data sharing agreement to where a common one is some data companies out of Texas will call up here and ask for all the parcels in the county. Most of our counties, and I can't recall if you guys are a member of it or not, have a data sharing agreement where we would process the data for you guys, submit it to them after your guys, after the county commissioners have signed off on it. We would typically charge them $750 for that data, and then the county would get $250 of that back into a fund.
We have that agreement.
Okay.
We have that agreement, yeah, last year started.
Yeah, typically that way, you guys don't have to hassle with dealing with those kinds of requests. As soon as you get one, you just pass it on to us, we'll prepare the paperwork, submit it to you guys, submit it to them for signatures, and then if there's any problems with the data not formatting right to their specs, we're the ones that help get that solved and get them what they need.
And so the county could get revenue back for?
Right. That's the idea, is you get some revenue back to spend on?
Will you do that now for?
Yeah.
I wasn't aware that we ever did that.
We won't give your data out to anybody, even like the state, you want them to submit that to the state. I won't take your data and submit it to the state for you. What I'll do is remote into your computer and help you do that, if you're doing it with the state, or a lot of times engineering firms need data like this for a bridge project, things like that. There's no cost to them or the state for those types of requests, but it's still covered under our agreement that we'll help provide that data to them. Typically, engineering firms, try some other, some surveying firms have needs for that data for projects they work on for the county, and we help get that to them.
They have a plat book company?
Usually plat book companies of the past, most counties have chose to charge them for that, but yes, it's the same thing. We provide the data to the plat book company, because they're actually selling advertisement and making revenue off of it, so most counties will charge for them. But it's up to you guys, if you want to charge or don't want to charge.
I think we had two requests last month. One company did only, was today, and the other company did.
Yeah.
It's exactly what we were. Finally, we will proceed to reimbursement.
They pay you, and then you spend that money somewhere?
And we probably have inter-local agreements, I'm sure with you, with all your surrounding counties, where we share your roads, your addresses, some of the basic information that helps them and public safety, same as you guys get their information. It's a mutual agreement to where you get their addresses and roads, and they get yours.
I think Glenwood and Bentonville both wind up doing some help with Rush County, because they're right on County Line Road.
Yeah.
Both then do some work over in Rush County.
I live in Edinburgh, and so one of the states I know that's in three different counties.
There's that Peso road inventory. Could you, for instance, reproduce like a listing of all of our quote county roads?
There it is, in Excel.
Yes, and then go to the bottom and put a summation, a signature down there?
Trying to make sure I get the right cut down here, because one of them's in feet and one of them's in miles.
I think column J is in the miles.
So now I can do a sum.
Does that sound?
Yeah.
Is it going to help us on our inventory, Warren?
Thank you. I was going to have to.
Needs updating. They still have some of those roads that don't exist and don't have our new ones on it.
Well, then, like the Rush County line, it's Rush County vehicles.
Yeah.
That should have been taken off Peso.
Tiff, you're responsible for your west and south boundaries, every county in the states that way.
Say that again?
You're responsible for your west and south bound, or, sorry, east.
East.
East and south.
Yeah, west is Rush County.
Yeah. So if there's a county line, one of the two counties is responsible for that road. County council districts, things like that are in there. Really, anything you can think of that's associated with the point on the earth can be put in the map. Tiff districts, like you were saying, historical districts. All that stuff can be drawn in there, so that when, say we get a call from address, use 808 again, we'll use a different street, maybe. So if I get a call from that address, I should be able to typically go up here and click this Identify Area button, click at that address, and it lists all the different areas that that point sits within the county. It'll tell you what section, what township, what parcel number, what voting district, what zoning, what soil there was right at that point. ESN for emergency numbers, commissioner districts, council districts. Just as long as something's drawn as an area, when you use that tool, if that point you clicked in is within one of those areas, it's going to list it there. You have the ability to measure on the map. So if I click there, I can come around this corner, may have to click a few times. But I can quickly measure length of roads, setbacks, things like that. This one allows you to enter a lat-long coordinate and find out where that is in the county. Typically, that's used by dispatch when a hunter or fisherman's lost, or doesn't have a GPS in their phone, they can give them a coordinate and see where they're at. We've even had DNR officers take the GPS that the hunter had, import that date into the map, so they can see the path that that hunter took, usually from accidents or deaths that have happened in hunting accidents. You can also measure areas. So if I want to know how big this baseball diamond is, come in, click, usually do it on pounds, things like that. I can zoom in and click more accurately. I can zoom in and get as accurate as measurements as I want, but it takes about 1.8 acres to make a baseball field. Some of the other tools up here, this tool always take you out, see the whole county, this will take you right back to where you were. You can move around the map really easily by right-clicking and holding down. Say if I want to go farther out, 10th Street. You can print the map. When you're printing, you actually have a whole other set of tools here, where if I want to do a cutout of a particular, yeah. There we go. I want to look at this particular parcel right there. Does like the blow, kind of like you see on plans a lot of times. I can put notes in there. Can attach pictures. A lot of times I've had engineers for the counties take pictures and attach them right to the culvert, so that the commissioners can see what the actual deficiencies are in that culvert. Can also print out to files, so you can email the files to somebody versus printing them out on paper. A lot of these tools in here are redundant, there are also buttons on the top. I've showed you a few of these, but you can also do from a radius point. That might be an example of where a chemical spill happened, and they did a plume out that went out, we'll say, half a mile. When I say it happened at that intersection, if you look in the bottom left there, you'll see the distance increase, you know, like .6 there. Yes, cheat and say that's a half a mile. It'll list all the addresses within that half mile from that point. So then those could be printed out, divided up amongst the firefighters or police officers to notify the people whether to stay in place or evacuate.
Could that information in central dispatch, could that be run through a program where there's an auto dial, where an auto message is sent to each and every one of the residents that have full numbers for those particular residences?
Typically, yes. We've worked with some other reverse 911 or notification systems, where we'll generate the list in the map and then ship that list to them, and that generates the calls or mailing or whatever we want to do.
I got a question here. Can you go to the Whitewater River, and then down south of Nolte Town, there's a great big wash place where the rivers have its banks? Can you measure that off and run a map of that?
I'm sure I could.
If you would, I'd like to have one.
That might be something I'll get with you afterwards to actually complete, but where at now?
It'd be south of Nolte Town, probably about?
480.
Huh?
About 480. About the bridge?
Yeah.
There's 475, so right in here?
Pretty sure that's it right there, where the river makes that leap and goes upward and then comes back down.
See that blue line?
Yeah.
That's the way at one time your river ran. That was drawn in off aerial photography, I would guess, I'm positive.
Can you run that?
Yeah.
Would you run me a copy?
Yeah, I can get, we can do it afterwards and get it exactly the way you want it, what you want to see in it, but that shows the change that's actually happened down in that area.
The yellow line is the current river?
The yellow line is a township line.
Okay.
That's where the time, that's the way the river probably ran many, many, many years ago. The white-blue line, that's the way it was drawn in the map, when it was drawn in, probably in 2008. And then you can see in the photography underneath, that's as of 2012. The county will be getting new photography this year, hopefully, at the end of November, maybe. The state has flown the county this spring, and if all goes well, you should have new photos before the first of the year, hopefully.
What this is, is where the river keeps leaving its banks, moving back and forth, and our river's the only one in state that is doing this, that's what I want to call it.
I've ran, I handle about 27 counties that I do service for like this, and I run into it a lot with parcels where the old deeds went to the center of the river. So one guy gained ground as the river changes, and another guy loses it. And that's just the way the deeds were written at that time, so I'm familiar.
It just flowed back and forth.
I'm familiar with this happening. It happens in Jackson County a little bit also. Jackson and Washington are two of the counties that I deal with, I ran into the same issue. Not as severe as that, but, yeah, it's river changing all the time.
Probably the river along, behind the park, behind that hole, is another moving target.
Yeah, that's the township line, and at one time, that probably did follow the river, would be my guess.
Yeah.
So you've got three different periods of time there that show some of the changes that have happened. And we also have multiple years of photography, so we can look at those different years of photography and see what's happened within those different flights that they have had.
Yeah, I think we got 2005 and 2012.
A lot of these are buttons that are on the top. One of them that's not on the top here is you can also get elevations of any point on the map. Can also use this other tool, elevation profile. Got to get out of that one first, sorry. Elevation profile. I'm going to try to move over here a little bit, where it might be a little bit hillier. So if I start that intersection, click some random points along through here, and right-click. On the bottom, it shows the distance covered, and on the left-hand side, it shows the elevation The map can also generate watershed areas for the highway sizing pipes. A lot of times the engineers will do that for the highway department, but you guys need to know the watersheds for different taxing purposes, too. I know you have some legal drains that you tax off of.
Yes, I know the DNR calculates runoff from watersheds in giving permits to build ponds and reservoirs and that sort of thing, calculate size of overflows. I don't know, Warren, if you've ever got into that or not, but you probably use that information for?
Legal reasons.
Culverts and bridges.
Yeah, culverts and bridges.
Yeah. That is, that's an excellent feature.
Yes. It, you know, before, I used to calculate them when I was in college, where I would go in and use the old plat maps and topo maps and try to figure out a legal drainage area, and it's not very much. This is a lot quicker, takes seconds, minutes at the most, where that kind of work in the past would take a day, two days sometimes. Not going to get into this today, but show map editing tools. This pulls up all the tools that are available when you're editing. Once you start editing, a whole other set of tools pop up to allow you to draw lines, draw areas, place points, label things, draw circles, all kinds of different stuff. You can export the data. There are passwords that can be put on the data to prevent other people from having access to it or exporting it out. We typically recommend that, especially when you're on a server, having all the layers that are on that server owned by somebody that's going to change them, password protected, so nobody else can get into and edit them. GPS, one of the things you asked earlier about individual units having the map in them, a GPS can be set up with a $60 or $70 puck, to where wherever you're at with a laptop or in the road, you can see where you're at going down that road. We use it for address verification, road inventory, culvert inventory, things like that that we used to do, but you can't get lost. You've got a dot or an arrow that's showing you where you're at all the time. AVL, that's where we would track ambulances, police vehicles, fire vehicles, we've even tracked highway vehicles for some counties. And help and help, this is our help map. It's an interactive help, so if I forgot what this It's an interactive help. So if I forgot what this button does here, if I just click on it, it goes in and tells you what that button does. If I wanted to do the look up, list features within an area, draw a bounding feature or draw a boundary, it goes in, tells you how to do that. It's a pretty friendly help menu. Get a lot of compliments on it. And here it always shows what's new in the latest versions. Each version has some tools and improvements and you can scroll through there and see really the major improvements that happen during each one of the upgrades.
Could you track weather-related damage?
Weather-related.
Could you track weather-related damage?
Sure. We send people out all the time with a laptop and a GPS unit and a form that will put on their damage assessment form, I believe is what it's called. Where then they can go out, fill that out in the field. They have the point that they're at so they can see the house right next to them, fill it out, and then when they're done, submit that to the state. The state also has their own program now, but I'm not sure if it's friendly for offline use. A lot of the state stuff is web interface and you can only do it when you're connected to the internet. We also have a 45-minute tutorial that will show you all the different ways of how to look up a road, how to look up an address. Because what I've shown you is some of the easiest ways, but there's multiple ways of doing it. And it will show you how to come to the index if you tried to look up an address in the search box up there and you didn't find it. It'll show you how to come into the index and now I can start doing searches. Say I want to find something on Ridge Road. I can see all the possibilities there with their addresses. If I click on a particular one, it'll take me to that one. I can always go back and this shows the different things that I've looked up while I've been here. Index is always going to have your last results up, so if that was the right one, I can click
Back several years ago, a company came in and was talking to the assessor's office about software that would compare a map from, we'll say, 2016.
It's called Change Finder out there.
Change Finder, yes. So that you could, it would identify wherever there was a change so that maybe someone added a deck or a swimming pool or a whatever, then...
I'm familiar with it. Some of our counties have used it. It's through pictometry. They're a photogammetry company.
Yeah, that's who it was that came and did the presentation.
Yep. They will come through, fly the county typically twice as part of a contract. Their photos are pretty high-quality photography, better than what you're going to get through the state typically. It also offers the ability to look at the four sides of the building, so you can zoom around and look at the north, south, east, and west directions of a building. But there is a Change Finder, that's an add-on feature that they have that goes out. It uses pixels and determines change in pixels to determine, to basically flag areas for possible investigation. It will have a lot of false positives, I would say, to start with, but you have to go through there and kind of weed those out.
Because there's trucks and...
Yeah, semis can be pulled up next to the house. All kinds of different things can give you false positives. Planting trees potentially could, you know, things like that. I have had counties, Worcester County is one of them that's been very happy with it. They found a million dollars of extra taxable property the first year they used it. To me, it's one of those things that it will have diminishing returns as time goes on because you won't get that big lump that you get that first time. But I do like their photography. It's pretty high, high-resolution photography.
I think one of the discussions, I think it was with Bill, maybe the city of Connersville for the parks would identify trees. And so therefore, like for instance, track all of the blues, Colorado blue spruce that have fungus and are they dying or not and track that. I mean, just your imagination. It's all limited by your imagination.
You can put light poles on it. You can put parking meters. You could put parking zones. You could put sidewalks. You could put wheelchair ramps. It's only limited by what people's needs are and their time, really.
I think one of the questions that came up was the billing because 911 is paying and then we're paying two or three other accounts daily, am I right? From two or three other accounts?
Yes, there's multiple accounts in there.
Yeah, I guess that's one question that we need clarification on if you have the information.
I think so. I've got those with me, but what it is, is there are different pieces that you guys have added on over the years. So the web GIS, the one that's open and public, that's one bill. I believe that's in the neighborhood of $3,600 a year to have it available to the public. There's a bill for public safety and 911. That includes their interface and the licenses that were purchased under that. Our service agreements have changed over time. At one time, it was a lump sum for the whole county. It usually ranged, back then, it's been 15 years ago, but it ranged about $12,000 for the whole county. That became a problem for county. They didn't see the value in that at one time, so we started breaking it up into the different pieces of public safety, land information, and infrastructure. And that's why you guys are paying multiple bills. One's public safety and one's, or land information for the parcel information and those kind of things.
So is the data contained in the various licenses, if I understand correctly, is restricted to that licensed user?
The data is shared throughout the organization. So the county's data is shared through all of the county licenses and you guys agreed to share it with Connersville. So they're seeing your county's data also. Some of Connersville data is not shared because of, I guess, homeland security is one of the reasons. They don't want the water lines main shown to the public, worried about somebody pumping stuff back into the water lines. So some of that stuff isn't readily shared with everybody, but if somebody has a need for it and the city doesn't have a problem with it, we'll make those pieces of data available to whoever, you know, both of you decide needs. The way we control the data is by a chart of accountability. That's who is responsible for any particular layer. So like Bill's computer, when he synchronizes, it sends up any changes to the address, any changes to the parcels. All those other layers that were under parcels like lot lines, rideaway, a lot of different stuff like that, all comes from their office. But, don't know of an example here, but say your health department, they put their septic on there. Other people can see that information, but we only accept those changes to the septic layer from that department and that machine. Nobody else can change it. If they do, if they don't have a password on it, somebody goes in and changes where the septic's are, they can change it, but as soon as we synchronize, it's going to overwrite those changes if somebody hasn't put a password on it. Because we only allow one person or one computer, really, to upload the information. You guys are on a server here in the county, so three or four people may be changing the data that Bill's uploading, but he's the only one that's uploading. So Warren could be changing the roads and the secretary could be changing the addresses and Bill changes the parcels. Bill's the only computer that we accept those changes from because he's the one that updates the server. But it's our way of kind of controlling and keeping track of who should be changing because ran into it right away with roads when we first started doing this 18 years ago. One person knows the road is Potato Road. Another one knows it is 750 North. Another one knows it is Hillbrook Road or something. There's only one official name for that road and that's what the commissioners have decided and what's in the 911 database. If those two don't agree, we need to change one of the two. So it's not restricted by what they purchased. It's restricted in what they can change, I guess, is the way we restrict them. They get to see all the information. It may not be in their map, but it's still on their computer. It's a file that's, every time you synchronize, it updates that file for any changes that have happened to it.
Okay, we have at least one private user here in the room with us. Warren, let me ask you this question. In your line of business, do you have, do you have any trouble getting information that's pertinent to your business that you may need for a particular situation? Do you have to make special requests to anyone?
This system has saved me so much time and effort and also saved me from bothering Warren and Bill and the assessor's office and the auditor and the tax people. Everything that I need, I can hit off of this system.
Yeah, go ahead. I was saying before, the GIS, we'd have realtors, crasers, everybody in every day wanting information. I'll put black books and stuff down. I can go to the website and get it. It's a link or a page that's saved since we've had this GIS, just in our office.
It says county, I think probably several employees that were diverted taking care of what the public wanted when they came in now. It's just been a tremendous benefit.
Faxing things all over the country, you know, if somebody calls in and wants something faxed, we have to find it, find information, fax it, and it takes a lot of time for GIS and all this, especially the public website got put up.
And it's not only the time they spend doing it, it's the time that they spend getting back to what they're doing. It's the interruptions. Most of our counties, once we implement the web version of the GIS, it reduced the foot traffic by 90% or more to the assessor's office, auditor's office, surveyor's office. It does reduce the traffic. People, once they find out about it, they're more willing to look it up online. And they can also compare their neighbor's tax bills, things like that, see if they're being taxed fairly. And one of the big advantages to the actual public.
Mark Brockman, you're very quiet. Usually you have lots of questions.
Yeah. You know, I'd be asking. I've been familiarized with this type of stuff. I don't know everything, but I know enough to know it. It's a great thing. It's good for us.
And if there is other pieces of data that you want to add at any time, it's not a big deal. You have stuff from the assessor auditor's data. It takes us a little bit of programming to do that, but that's part of our service agreement that we don't charge for that. We'll add those other fields in. As, one of the things that does break it fairly often is the auditor assessor's software providers making changes. They'll make a change or an update to their program and it's going to break that parcel import. They'll usually have to call us and say the data's not working and we'll have the programmer look at it and rebuild the interface to make those adapt to whatever their software providers providing now.
One thing we talked about, again, you know, there's a lot fewer people and the county doesn't have the resources to hire more people to, say, be a Dave Moore or somebody in the highway department, but that perhaps an intern or someone that wants to study highway management or somebody in the college area that would want to be, maybe work under Warren or something. An intern could, for three months in the summer, locate all the culverts, for instance, and put it on a layer. And you would provide some training in addition if Warren couldn't do it or if Richard couldn't do it, if we needed some additional training so that we could set up that layer. You might...
We're there to do that. We have three methods of providing our service. First is just a phone call, talking you through stuff over the phone. Second is where we'd remote in, see your desktop, actually be able to work the mouse, things like that. Some of the training we can accomplish that way. But like covenor inventory, something like that, I would probably, myself, come here and spend a couple hours with them, driving around until you did five or 10 of them and then tell him he's on his own and go for it and call if you have any questions. We want to help you guys in any way we can. We want the product to be used and utilized. The more it's used, the more secure we are as far as a vendor to the county. Plus, I'm a resident of Indiana, too. I want it to be better. I mean, I want the information to be better all the time. It's part of what I've been helping Bill with. I've shown him different ways of looking at the parcels, trying to find errors or mistakes in there so we can get those cleaned up. And a lot of our counties now have like 99% of their parcels identified as to who the owner is and the parcel number. Typically, there's always a few out there that were part of a state rideaway project or something that nobody knows who owns a particular piece of property. It's usually corners, things like that a lot of times.
This is a map that the Gymnastics Center gives out to people attending gymnastic meets so that they know where the locations are for all the restaurants. Everybody's tired and hungry and they've got a car full of kids and so this is on the back of the program. Dom Schröder for Fair County Tourism puts out a flyer quarterly and it has some key points of interest. And I see maybe that being some kind of a layer. But this quote, just fast food or just restaurants, a layer that would go with a map that you could print out, you know, just this, you know, like that.
Yeah, it can be done. It's as simple as putting those points on there. Sometimes the health department may already have all those points on the map for his health inspections. I mean, sometimes those are put on the map as the health inspection, the grades that they got. It's really, anything that you can have a map for can be put on there. And it's like that. 99% of the people that use the map will care less about those restaurants.
Right.
But it's a layer that can be there, be maintained, but won't actually be in most people's map that they're looking at. It'd be a layer that you have to add in if you want to see it because it just clutters your map when you aren't wanting to look at that kind of stuff all the time.
Right, right. It's just something you keep updated. Like the tourism thing, there's constantly new things to promote, so, but you still use the same county map to show where they are.
Right.
And maybe there's a new point of interest that went on there.
Like you see here, the map is not displaying a whole lot of information. A lot of the layers in the map are set up to pop on as you zoom in closer so that it's not just clutter and labels on top of labels. And all that's controlled in your layer settings. I didn't go over that in the demonstration, but that's something that... I didn't go over that in the demonstration, but that's something that typically only users get into. That will allow you to turn layers off on or make them visible at, meaning they pop on when you zoom in so far or go away as you zoom in so far. But the maps can be changed so that people that are colorblind can have their own map that doesn't show any yellows if that's the color they can't see. We try to make it very specific to that end user. The web product is not that way. When you pop it up, that's what you get and you have to start from there and change it to what you want to see. We are working on a next generation of our web product. Maybe out for beta testing within the next few months. So I would say within the next six months. The web version should get a lot better for cell phone and iPad usage. Right now, it's kind of clunky the way it works on cell phones and things like that, but the next generation of it is geared specifically to work with multiple types of devices.
So your smartphone could be out in the cemetery identifying some of those little cemetery programs, for instance?
Our biggest use is usually Realti and things like that. Realtors are big with the phones and stuff, so it's, it's going to make it a lot more presentable on the small device or small screens. To where to flip from information to map instead of trying to display both at the same
That's a very good demo, Paul. Does anyone else have any specific questions for Paul? Shirley, do you, do you have anything else?
Well, I would, I don't have any more specific questions of Paul. I'd, I'd maybe one-on-one, just like I would appreciate if he could print for Mark.
Sure.
That, to, to demonstrate to Mark. Because again, that's a project that needs some attention and that's what, what it's all about. But I would be, like you say, on the one-on-one training, I'm just, for example, for Richard and Angie to use that Pacer information, I would love to have them have some more one-on-one training. And, and then again, maybe one of those high school programs that can work with, with them so that wouldn't be a burden for them to put information, but somebody could help identify some of those things that are important to Richard and Angie. I mean, Richard has, I would think he, his need for good information is important just like the volunteer firefighters and the 911 and the sheriff's department.
I mean, some typical layers the highway would use are culverts, signage, bridges, ditch improvements. I mean, e- even projects that they do can be overlaid onto there so they can see Spencer County. Every time they put out roads for resurfacing, they add those roads as a layer in the map to show what they resurfaced in 2017, 2016, and so forth. So they can flip those on and see last time a particular road was paved.
So for instance, we could start with this year, 2017, when we did the Everton Road and the Waterden Road and then next year...
That, like I said, that's my background, so I, I see a big value in that, being able to say, well, putting an inch and a half of binder and an inch of surface, did that do as good as putting the three inches of binder and the inch of surface? Or how is the cost benefit? Which one's going to be less per year?
Right. You would add the specifications, et cetera, that went on those roads.
I think we have to update them every two years for community crossings, right?
Yes, yes.
And single...
You need to go out and redo your Pacer ratings, I believe. The way we used to sit in Indianapolis is we would take one township, because it's so big, over 3,000 miles, we would do every road in one township each year. Maybe one, maybe two. But then all the others, we would only look at the roads that were below a certain rating. That was based off of the $10 million they had to spend each year for their roads. So we might do everything below a 2.5 rating and evaluate all those other townships so you don't have to drive every road because they don't deteriorate that quick typically. Unless there's some unusual situation, you know, a new gravel pit or concrete plant moving and things like that can deteriorate a road quick. I'm here for any questions you have, as long as you want me.
I think they're going to have some...
Yes.
More tasks for you after the, this meeting is officially over. Unless, we have two more meetings scheduled later on in the afternoon, so, and we've run on here for a little over hour and a half. Need to give everyone a chance to get done what they need this afternoon. If, if there's nothing else, if no one has anything else for Paul on his demonstration.
I just wondered, do we have a contract? Is your contract about, about...
They, they typically, they are evolving contracts and there'll be different ones that are due at cer, different times of the year. So you, you might have one that's billed soon, but then there might be another one billed the first of the year. And all those contracts can be canceled within 60 days, I think, have written notice to us. We don't want you to, but we don't, we don't want to hold you to something that we wouldn't want to be held to. We don't want to do a five-year contract and have you pay for something that you may not end up using that whole five years.
I would like to have more information on the specific contracts. I think we have four contracts to keep. And I would like to know what they're for and whether we need to keep them or...
Sure.
What the difference is. Me and the commissioner are responsible for contracts and the cost and what we're spending them for. So I want to know more specific because I know you sent us an email with them and I haven't had time to read them. And I figure I wouldn't understand them after I read them anyway.
That's fine.
So I want somebody to explain it to me.
Sure.
Well, and I think that Jane, and I'm not sure whether it was you or who, whether the communication, because again, I saw that email as well. And again, from the council, working on the budgets and, you know, make sure, but I, everybody has to look at this from their own lens. You know, to me, I, I see the tremendous possibilities of what we can do with it.
I think one of the confusions was there was a year or two where you guys didn't pay for the web GIS. You dropped the contract or had told us you were. I think we even got written notice from the auditor that, that it was being dropped. We had left it up because more times than not, when people have dropped this, it hasn't been very long before they wanted to re-up with us. And I think the commissioners found out that we weren't being paid even though the service was still being out there. So you may have gotten hit twice in a one-year period for that, that same service, which was $3,600, I believe, for the website service. So you may have paid one in arrears and then the bill came due and probably paid another one. That's one of my hunches is what the confusion is about the billing.
I just want to know that, what it is we're paying for and whether we need all four contracts or what it was because I think we enforce separate contracts and I would think one contract should be to cover whatever I don't understand.
We can do it that way if the county wishes to have it all as one contract, but it's, it's basically, you've added different things over time, so they've been different contracts.
Well, I come in after all of them had been added, so I kind of want to know what's going on.
You want to do that after the meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. President, if there are no further questions or comments, I'll move to adjourn.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
All second.
Motion and a second to adjourn. Is there any further question? Always in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries, we'll stand adjourned. Paul, you hang out for a while and Bill has some extra work.
Sure. Thank you very much. You're welcome. Thank you.